Me and the Connerhill Council will come to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance by Debbie Montgomery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'll have a little invocation here by John Ramsay.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, and I'm thankful, God, for this opportunity to just come and, Lord, I thank you for our city leaders and those that are present in this meeting tonight, and we pray for those that could not be here. We just pray, God, that you would just give guidance and direction in the meeting, give wisdom. Lord, we pray for great decisions to be made that would bring great favor to our city. We pray for the family of Melvin Mertz, Lord, in his passing, and, God, I just pray for all these children and teenagers as they go to start with school this week, Lord, and all the administrators and those working in our school system, teachers, Lord. I just pray, God, that you would just bring great things to our city, Lord. Just bless this meeting tonight, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Before we start the meeting, I ask everyone to please silence your phone because on the silent mode or whatnot. I'll start with the real ones.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Councilwoman Nettie.
Present.
Councilwoman Durham.
Present.
Councilwoman Frank.
Here.
Councilwoman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Navi.
Here.
All righty. Well, it looks like you got everybody here and we're ready to start. We'll start with reading of the minutes. You've been presented the minutes. Do you see any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. On the first item, new business, Resolution 2018-52, it's a statement of benefits of compliance. Want to talk about that?
We have seven companies I brought before you. You were given an information for the tax abatement log, where they, the amount they have proposed and where they are currently at according to their CF1s that they filed for 2017. I recommend approving all of them at this time. We have one that I think we need to have some conversations with, but...
All right. You have their information. It is confidential information, so please advise you not to share that. So what would I like to do with this one?
I have a question. The one that is pretty much not in compliance, how much different have they been in the past? Or is this the greatest number?
They have increased their employment as well as salaries this year from last year, but the proposed salaries and number of employees was just not even, I don't know where they came up with that number at. It just wasn't feasible.
So what you're saying was they never should have gotten in this to begin with?
No. I think they should have gotten the abatement. I think they just set their goals really high instead of being more reasonable with their...
They forecasted it way too hard.
Absolutely.
But how did they get in it, though? Isn't that how they got in it? Or...
Well, it's more by your investment in your property, and they did all the investment that they said they were going to.
Physically.
Just all the facilities are not full.
Okay. Yeah, it is hard to do that without having full capacity.
And one of the requests that we asked them is that they try not to go out and headhunt other companies that are already existing in the community. They were, we asked them to bring new businesses in rather than stealing them from another location.
So how do we approve this partially, or how do you want to do it, John?
You can make a motion to approve it. You cannot do it partially. If we want, we can't have a tax abatement meeting, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then come back with a report from that. That'll be myself, the mayor, Rosemary, and...
Diana.
School's getting ready, so that's what happened. Diana will have a meeting and then we'll come back and report to you.
I see no reason why they aren't diligent in trying to get everything occupied. It's difficult for them to dictate the occupants of how many employees they're going to have.
Right.
But this was a hopeful number. It's just not going to make it.
Kind of unrealistic number.
I think they certainly were hopeful at the time. It's just not going to make it.
I'll make a motion that we should have a separate meeting and then the folks come back to us with what your decision was.
Does that hold anything up, per se? No?
That would not affect the rest of them, though. That's my question.
That's what I asked in the beginning.
I say we have, my make a motion is to approve them all. They're just sitting on renegotiate over the next year with this one stop compliance. That would not hold the rest of them up. The rest of them are good and they've honored their work.
If you don't approve it today, nothing changes, right?
Yeah, but we can't have two motions.
It could die for lack of a second.
Right. It's not that if this dies, it's not going to affect the rest of them.
If this dies, or if this doesn't get passed at this point in time, it will not affect them.
But his motion, if we, it can die for a lack of a second, then we won't have this special meeting.
No second to this motion?
So a special meeting affects all of them, conversations with one?
No.
Is what your...
No.
No.
We just can't...
Not, I don't mean affect it. I mean, we don't go through with it.
Let's see if we got this. Is there anybody who wants to second the motion that Mike made to, how'd you phrase that again?
Have a separate meeting.
Have a separate meeting for this.
And the folks come back to us.
No motion, or no one second? Motion is. All right. So if we do nothing today, correct me if I'm wrong, then we have a meeting. So if there's no action taken whatsoever, we'll have a meeting report back to you guys. If nothing is done today, nothing changes for anyone at this point in time.
At this point in time.
Does that make sense?
Why would we not approve?
Is there a...
We need to have a meeting about the one...
Well, there's another motion for Chad to approve it.
What did you...
That was out of work because I don't...
Oh, that's true. Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering why you couldn't just make a resolution for...
The others and just leave it off.
The others and then have your, then entertain a motion to have a separate meeting just on the one. That's the question I asked earlier.
Or just bring it back next meeting. We could just bring it back next meeting.
Can't you just change this resolution?
Can we table it?
It's a proposed resolution at this time.
We could table it and then just...
So we could, is there a motion to amend the proposed resolution?
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to do that.
And I'll second that.
It's probably move to second that we amend the main motion, striking out the one company's name that was listed on there and then question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Is there a motion to pass?
That's all you need.
That was just an amendment.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept the resolution to 28-15 as amended, leaving the rest of the companies minus the one we just talked about?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. And then we just had that one we have to meet about come out.
You'll need to move, you'll need to make a motion, I think, as far as the meeting on the other one.
Do we have to have a motion to send it?
I don't think you, well, I guess you don't have to since...
We could just meet and discuss.
So we're just going to perform something that has better numbers, more suitable to them eventually.
All right. So now we're on to action item B, Resolution 28-53, Grant Operation Pullover.
Resolution 2018-53 is a resolution reimbursing police Operation Pullover overtime in the amount of $3,739.05. Do you want me to continue down to the next three resolutions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Please.
Resolution 2018-54 is a resolution reimbursing $835.10 into police pension for overpayment. Resolution 2018-55 is a resolution to reimburse police telephone in the amount of $897.48 to go into the police telephone. Resolution 2018-56 is a resolution to reimburse police telephone in the amount of $729.98 in first aid uniforms in the amount of $41.25.
Is there a motion to accept those resolutions?
Second.
Is moved probably second that we accept Resolution 28-15, or 18-53 through 56. Is there any debate? See now, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
On the Operation Pullover, we wanted to ask permission today as well to apply for the next grant round. We will be asking, we'd like to ask for $15,000 in Operation Pullover funds and then another $2,500 in drug recognition expert funds. We had an officer that went to school and got a certification to, if there's someone that's driving impaired and it's not alcohol, it's drug-related, this gentleman gets, the officer gets called out and we can reimburse his salary through the grant as well, just like a regular overtime.
What'd you call it, fund?
It's the Operation Pullover Fund, but the officer is a DRE. It's a Drug Recognition Expert.
Okay. What's match?
It is.
There is no cash match, per se, upfront. What we do is the council allows the officers to use the vehicles and that also out of the general pays for fringe benefits for the officers. This just pays, the OPO money pays directly, salaries only. So the other is minimal compared to the amount of time we get officers on the street and those extra hours.
So seeking a grant authorization of $15,000 for OPO, is that right?
Right.
And then $2,500 for the drug recognition expert.
Right.
And what is that timeframe? Is it the calendar year of 2019?
It's a federal fiscal year, so it'll be October 1st through September 30th of next year. They're in the process of changing software at the state, so we may not even get to apply till the 1st of October. We're just trying to have everything lined up and ready to go as soon as they open up. We don't need a motion for that, do we?
We need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's moved by a second to authorize grants for $15,000 of Operation Pullover and $2,500 for the drug recognition expert. Is there any debate? See now, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Do you have one more thing?
Oh, go ahead.
If I can.
Yes, I'll be quick.
We are, the Community Crossing Grant opened today. I would like to be able to apply for $500,000. We, the city can match about $500,555, to be exact. So with council's permission, I would like to be able to do that.
What's our match?
Rosemary gave me some preliminary numbers of $555,000. It's a 50-50 match.
Last year, we moved the appropriations from Local Road and Street and MVH that we appropriate for paving into a matching fund to cover what we applied for earlier this year, including those same appropriations from Local Road and Street and MVH. So that gave us $400,000 for our last application. We applied. We didn't get all that. We only got, we only had to use $267,000.
Our bids came in really low last year, so we were really lucky.
So that saved us and so we had some amounts left over there, and if we continue to appropriate next year's amounts to that, we'll be able to use $100,000 for Local Road and Street and additional from MVH because from MVH you now have to have 50% of your income going to construction, reconstruction of the roads. So that's the only thing we can use that money for is...
Well, it's $240,000 left.
Grant matching.
That we have.
And we had, we have $300,000 for next year.
So we got to do that. Okay.
So we got enough to make the match.
Yes. All that money has to go into the roads.
Gotcha.
I can't spend it on anything else. It's got to go on the roads.
We'll get it this year, right?
We got, we actually got funded for everything we asked for last year.
Awesome.
It was just, our bids came in really well. We were, we were early on the jump and it came in.
I'll make that motion.
And the scope of these projects are paving of the roads, not the intersections of the handicap accessibility or anything?
Everything you pave now, you have to switch ADA compliant.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Mr. ADA Coordinator? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to accept, or to approve the grant?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Any more?
I think I'm done tonight.
Thank you, Diane. Sorry, I went blank there. All righty. We're now on to the pending, or, shoot, pending ordinance, 3433, addition of two handicap parking signs.
Good evening.
Good night, Carol.
We have a request from the Daniel's Fros Farmhouse Restaurant at 6th and Central to add two handicap parking spaces. One in front, in front of 602, and the other one in the 100 block of 6th Street. And they're here. If you have any questions for them.
My survey of the handicap parking in downtown Connerhill between 4th and 8th, or actually 9th, that's the only block that has no handicap parking.
Right.
I move that we accept this request for these two handicap parking spaces, sir.
Second.
It is moved by a second that we accept pending ordinance 34, the addition of two handicap parking spots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to spin the rules.
Oh, yeah, we have to spin the rules.
So moved.
You're fine. All in favor, spin the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to third and final reading. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's moved by a second that we move to the third and final reading on pending ordinance 3433. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thanks for going down there, David. Thanks for going and checking it out.
All right. Moving on to pending ordinance 3434, Establishment Fund 400.
Pending ordinance 3434 is establishing the Fund 400 named Energy Savings Fund to be able to manage the used monies from, we will be starting the solar panel project over the next four, five months, and we need to have a fund to accumulate the savings to make the lease payments on the solar panels. So this fund will establish this, or manage this.
A question on this fund. In the establishment of this fund, who would be overseeing how that money's spent at this point in time?
Clerk of Treasury.
Clerk of Treasury. Because it has no defined use, right?
It's all encompassing of the energy savings project.
But this will be the savings of that?
First, it'll be the lease of receiving the monies to make the payment for the solar panels, and then the fees incurred, and then it'll, once we start saving with installation, upgrading everything to LED lights, we can start moving the savings to this fund to accumulate for the first payments.
And then, so the savings are going to accumulate in this fund and not be spent?
That's correct. It'll be spent just for the lease payments.
To make the lease payments.
Will that be billed, Rosemary, as they go per building, per se, or will it be billed, or do you know?
It'll be by the location, you know?
Okay.
Some locations I get 10 bills for. Two of them will hopefully go down to $10.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept pending ordinance 3434?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of accepting ordinance 3434, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Is there a motion to spin the rules?
So moved.
It is moved by, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by a second that we spin the rules and move forward to third and final reading. All in favor, spin the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. On third and final reading of pending ordinance 3434, is there a motion to accept this?
So moved. Second.
It is moved by a second to accept pending ordinance 3434 on third and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right. We have any old business? Any miscellaneous business?
Clerk of Treasury, I think.
All right. On the public floor, am I from the public have anything I'd like to address at this moment? Come on. State your name and address, please.
My name's Alice Allen, and I live on Jersey Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for that meeting that we had a while, meeting before this. At least you took the time to listen. I don't think you were here to chat. And Mr. Bishop, at that meeting, I addressed some of the concerns over the horse track, harness racing, and you took an extra effort because I saw you walk in and try to maybe resolve a few things. But where I come from, when you got a problem, you sit down and discuss it, you present paper, everything leads in facts. So everybody's read the press, everyone's heard two sides and three sides to everything. And I'm still, my horses are still, and part of them are in the city park, part of them are at the fair board, and that will end as soon as I can get a health certificate to where they can go someplace different. It will also end legally, because when you're blocked into a corner where you have to retain attorneys, I'll retain them and I'll go. And I had printed in the paper that the truth has no personality. I don't know to this day if I'm allowed to use the track, to this day. I go to the park board, they can't give me an answer. But that park's owned by the city, so that's why I'm here. I go to the park board, and they said that they were directed not to speak to me by your council. If I speak to you, I call you up. And they said you've given direct order not to speak to me or your city employees. I'm not bad. I just wanted the right to work. I came here in good faith. It just wasn't the way things were. My problems didn't start till I went to see the mayor to ask him to help me resolve the situation. He helped me resolve it. But I still love harness racing. It's been here since 1853. There's a lot of grants. There's a lot of money there. So, Mr. Butch, same thing happened in the city of Frankfurt, which I told you on the telephone. So here is every contact number, every contact person for the city of Frankfurt when the city took over harness racing. They received their grants. They redid their track. Jim Davis, head of the commission, those people sit on the boards. They form their own little boards. That other man is president of the Standard Red Owners and Brutus Association, Jack Klauger, and they give small grants for upgrades. I brought that piece of paper here so that way there wouldn't be any confusion of who could talk to me, who couldn't talk to me. And that's a sad way to be, because it will cost a lot of people instead of sitting down at a roundtable discussion and finishing things. There's men here, PJ, his dad, they're stabled over there. PJ went to your schools, was classified, classified, what, learning disabled and had to go into special programs. Trying to take a kid and make him a man and changed a whole lot. But the city council at least took the time to listen and speak, and I thank you all for that. And let me know if the track's open, because I'd still like to go ahead and move my colts that aren't sick, and the ones that are, at least it'll blow out the congestion, you know, the congestion will come out of their nose. And the city accepted my payments for the stalls that I'm renting from the city. I just have no answers to anything and caught in a terrible limbo. And that's pretty sad, because Erica told me, she doesn't know if the track's open, told me she wasn't allowed to speak with me, or that Jessica Fall isn't allowed to speak with me. So I figured I'd just come to the city, who are the leaders, that maybe they could look up my contract, because I have a contract with the city, I have a contract with the fair board, and then I have this own special contract with the city. So which contract do you abide by? I think there's a whole lot of paper, and no one really knew what the other one's really doing. And all I look forward to is to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning and work my horses and try to earn a living. The track was locked for three weeks, and no one even said it was. That particular day when it was locked on a Tuesday, my husband was jogging horses and training horses in a backhoe come across the track. No one said a word. I asked Jessica if I could jog a half a mile one way or three, quarter of a mile one way and back the other on that Tuesday afternoon so I could race my horses Wednesday. No one answered. They just put a lock on the gate. When I called Mr. Powers, he said the city didn't lock it. He said the fair board locked it. But where we come from, when you're affecting someone's living, you kind of tell them, this is what we're doing. This is why we're doing it. No one's ever done that. And to me, you wouldn't like it if I turned your sheep loose, your goats loose, you know, locked up your car to where you couldn't use it. At least tell you so you have options, not just do it that day. So thank you, guys.
You're welcome. And everyone else, I speak. See now, we're entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Oops, me, I should have earlier. Sorry. But I wanted to recognize Stant Manufacturing, celebrating 120 years of manufacturing in Connerhill. They had an event Saturday to recognize employees and civic leaders, and they had plant tours and meals for the employees and recognition. I just thought it was a real nice event, and I appreciate Stant choosing to stay in Connerhill, and hopefully they'll stay maybe another 120 years. hundred and twenty years.
Anything else? I got one thing. School starts Wednesday. Everybody be excited for it. If you know little ones, tell them to get excited. Should be excited, because our attitude will affect theirs, so. Tell them that it's going to be a great year, so. Anybody else have anything? All right. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any opposed? All right. Motion to adjourn.